Thank you very much and good evening. I've got nothing that I can really talk about.
Mayor and counsel, I have one item and that is the railroad is back in town and working on Wall Street crossings. So Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Streets, the crossings will be redone here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Monica Call-Wolton.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Craig.
Here.
Thurlie.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
White.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the rezoning request from Aerie LLC for the parcel at 702 Mankato Avenue.
Okay, I'll open that public hearing and ask if there's anyone present wishing to speak to the rezoning requests by Aerie LLC. Anyone wishing to speak to the rezoning requests by Aerie LLC? Anyone present wishing to speak to rezoning requests for Aerie LLC? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what is your plea?
Move to approve that rezoning request.
Okay, move by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the rezoning request for Aerie LLC? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 3.1 is the Home Federal Bank request for parking for the blood drive on September 6th. Six spaces in parking lot number three.
Move to approve.
Move by George, second by Michelle, questions? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the request of Home Federal? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Item 3.2 is the request for use of Latch Island Beach by the Mississippi River Revival for their cleanup on Saturday, September 8th. Move to approve.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by George, questions? All in favor of the motion?
Just a comment, Mayor, I assume in the agenda item that they meant since 1991 instead of 1891? That they have been working, they do a wonderful job and appreciate that, but...
Good ayes, Al.
Just wanted to make a comment.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion which is to approve the request by Home Federal? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 3.3 is the request to hold Cotter's birthday-5K run walk on Saturday, September 29th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jerry, second by Michelle, questions? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the request to hold Cotter's birthday dash? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 3.4 is the no parking request by the Winona American Legion for their event on Saturday, September 15th.
Move to approve.
Moved by Jerry.
I'll second that.
Second by Al, questions?
Do you have, they have a specific area that they would like to have it closed? Is it between the driveways of the Vethen Center, I assume?
I'm assuming the same thing.
That's correct.
For visibility.
All right. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion which is to approve the no parking request? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 3.5 is the street closure request for Winona's National Night Out on Thursday, August 30th. Move to approve?
Moved by Debbie.
Second.
Second by Michelle, questions? All in favor of the motion which is to approve this street closure? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 3.6 is the license agreement for the Great Dakota Gathering on September 14th through the 16th. You have the draft agreement in front of you. We do have one note, you need to determine if the city's insurance policy will cover the event.
Okay, Maynard, you want to address this, please?
Mayor and counsel, we put together this Dakota Gathering draft license agreement with help from the city attorney, and everything looks pretty good throughout there. The one thing that we didn't want to take for granted is that the city would cover the insurance. They've done it for the last eight years that it's been on. Other than in-kind type things like we normally do for other events, we haven't asked for any other things, but that's one thing that really wasn't discussed or talked about and really covered. So if you were going to proceed with that, in talking to Monica and looking at that, the cost and possibility of the need for that or the use of that isn't like steamboat days or other types of events, so the liability chances aren't very risky. So I'd like that to be amended in there, and then we change that license agreement once it's approved, and then the president would sign it after that.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on Maynard? Al.
Mayor, what is the cost to the city of this insurance coverage?
That we don't know, but pretty minimal. And I don't know the exact cost of...
Okay.
Monica do, I don't know.
It's probably covered under our umbrella.
It's our umbrella policy.
Okay, okay. Okay, questions or comments on the license agreement, or do we have a motion?
There's no motion.
There is no motion?
I would move to approve the license agreement with the insurance included in...or insurance to be added to the agreement as it's developed by staff and presented to the Winona Dakota Unity Alliance.
Okay, so the insurance would be under our umbrella, right?
Yes, that's the intent of the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Michelle. Debbie.
I just want to say, I'm, we'll be abstaining from this vote. I am president this year of the Winona Dakota Unity Alliance, but I do want to thank particularly Maynard for, I want to make sure, above and beyond, everyone feels from the WD away for all these years of his help and his patience and his effort and helping kind of corral all this and get us there. So it's very, very much needed, and we couldn't do a lot of this, particularly all this detail and the work you did on this as well. I want to thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment that everyone should attend, it's a very wonderful event.
Oh, absolutely. Oops, sorry, Your Honor, I forgot, I'm sorry.
I think this is a big one, right? Yes.
It is a big one, I should, I'm sorry. Forgot one other thing. I am still in great need of volunteers. I set out a call for volunteers. My other hat is I'm also volunteer coordinator again this year for the Great Dakota Gathering Homecoming, September 14th to the 15th. So please, please, if you can volunteer, we would love it, greatly appreciate it, greatly need it, and email or call me, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which to approve the license agreement for the Great Dakota Gathering? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention.
Item 3.7 is the license agreement with Zaza's for mobile concessions. This would be for one year, starting September 7th. Move to approve that, I'm sorry, no, that's okay, go ahead. Move to approve that agreement?
Moved by Debbie, is there a second? Second by Michelle, questions or comments? Jerry.
There was, this is the first year for this particular one, and also there was a brand-new business next door that was the first year, and some of the members of council did receive some calls on some of the growing pains that took place, but we're working with all parties. I feel confident that those growing pains are done and things are going to move forward in a very good fashion, so I support the motion. But also, after this motion, at some time in the future, if we could direct staff to take a look at, we have now two of this type of concession. Two is probably about as far as we want to go. So it might be that have staff come back with a recommendation, but so we don't have anybody else trying to do some work, spend the money, and then find out that we put a cap on it. I think we need to do the cap before someone else comes forward. And then the two organizations that have it now aren't guaranteed, but provided that they follow the rules and regulations and have good business, then they would be the two.
Okay, any other questions? Al.
I guess I concur with Councilman Craig, however, I would like to see, obviously, the recommendation from staff before, obviously, we take any action on this. I have some concerns as well, and primarily on the cost of the license itself, and then as it relates to the cost of any additional police supervision and enforcement action that's needed in the downtown area.
You're talking about after this, right? I mean, you're not before.
Yeah, I'm not speaking against the motion, but I'm commenting on Councilman Craig's direction of staff.
Jerry.
And maybe two is, maybe three is the number, but have staff spend some more time, look at the license agreement as it is, and give a recommendation on what the max number should be.
And if any changes are needed in the license agreement cost.
Yeah. You've got to remember, too, there are other businesses downtown that do serve food, so you've got to make sure.
Right, so you could crowd it pretty quick.
Yeah, you know, and they all pay property tax and all that where they're at, so we've got to take that into consideration also. Okay, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the license agreement for Zaza's? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 3.8 is the license agreement request from Pack and Mail Express for an encroachment into the right-of-way on Mankato Avenue. This is to permit the construction of a handicap ramp at 479 Mankato Avenue. I'll move to approve the request.
Moved by Michelle, second by, okay, second by George, questions or comments? Mayor, George.
Keith, I talked with Brian, did he, just a little bit? Would it be possible at all, and I know there's a wider sidewalk on Mankato Avenue, which of course prior to that would be considered like the boulevard, would it be possible to put this ramp over on the Ninth Street side? Or we would, of course, you know, maybe, you know, probably take a lot of the sidewalk up? Or do we see, do we see any problems with this, with the encroaching on the business next door? I don't know how much involved in this that you are, and Brian, I know was involved more with it.
I don't know what the layout for inside the building, what it, if it makes a difference to them on that or not. I really don't know if they could move it or not, but I can, we can try to make that happen if you'd like.
I mean, I will vote for this request tonight, but if they could look at something about doing it on Ninth Street, then maybe we could bring it back and just change that from here to Nine Third.
Unless I'm totally confused, I mean, this is just a couple of blocks from my house. It's on Tenth Street in Mankato.
Right.
Yeah.
So Ninth Street...
Excuse me, I was saying Ninth, I meant Tenth.
Thank you. Otherwise, we're over back where they were before, over there on the other side, thank you. So Tenth Street.
Thank you, Tenth Street.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the license agreement from Pack and Mail? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 3.9 is the resolution to oppose the recognition of marriage constitutional amendment.
Okay, now, this is not a public hearing, so I'm not going to, we're not going to take public comment, but if people do want to have, you know, a public discussion on this, I would suggest that a group have a public, you know, a public meeting on this where people could come and air their concerns. But as far as this forum tonight, or the council tonight, we're not taking any public comment. We did get, I think we got all the public comment that we need. I mean, I know my phone's been ringing all day, I'm sure everybody has. Our emails have been, for the last two or three weeks or even longer, we've been getting emails on this subject. So I think we have enough information on this. So with that, I turn it back to council. What is your request?
Can we talk? Can we talk?
Yeah.
Want us to make a motion or talk?
Yeah, you want to make a motion, go ahead and make a motion.
I want to be able to talk about it first.
Well, whatever you want to do.
Can we do that? If that's right, if council will hear me out. I guess to open the discussion among council, my colleagues as well, I think for, I first want to do thank our city's Human Rights Commission. Now, that's part of their charge, you know, as it says, to advise the council and other agencies, the government, and all the work and the thoughtfulness that they went through on this as well, to bring it to us, to council for our consideration. For me, the way I see the real point here, there may be some folks, or some of us that aren't quite as clear, that this issue, I think, to bring to knowledge is currently state law and has been for many years. So it's Minnesota statute 517.03, called prohibited marriages. For me, the issue here that we're talking about in other cities, as you're aware of in the state of Minnesota, 12 to date, against other numerous organizations, many, I believe, and for myself, I believe, we're speaking to changing potentially the Minnesota constitution, amending the constitution. And I feel governing by constitutional amendment is not representative government, that that is also what our charge is here, is representatives of government, that the constitution is the foundation of democracy or democratic principles, and I believe exists to protect everyone's rights, all citizens, civil and human rights. So this, you know, when I talk about, regardless again of your opinion, I feel legislating, you know, by constitutional amendment, I think that's the issue here, because fundamentally that's not the way to govern, administer, and legislate. And I do believe that it is a legitimate concern of other government bodies, because it also is our purview as to how we govern, you know, is it, does it belong as a constitutional amendment? As I said, as a government was not founded on this way of governing or making decisions, that it should be done legislatively by the legislature as we make laws, you know, set a statute, and currently it is a statute. So that was my view on there as to what this is brought forward, and I believe is the intent of what the Human Rights Commission is saying. So regardless of your opinion, we're looking at the governing issues and does it belong as a constitutional amendment as to how we govern and how we look at the foundation of our democracy. In regard to that, then I would like to bring forward to council that I do, that I do recommend that we approve the resolution that the Human Rights Commission has brought to council in our, as before us.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Okay, there's no second, so the motion fails. Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Item 5.1 is to set the date for the public hearing to consider resolution of levying assessments for unpaid charges. The public hearing would be September 17th.
I would move to approve to set the hearing date of September 17th.
Second.
Okay, moved by George, second by Debbie. We do have a new list?
We'll have a new list.
Okay. All right, so, and I'm sure we'll get another list by the time the public hearing comes by, all right? Okay, so all, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion which is to set the date for the public hearing as September 17th? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 5.2 is the 2012 and 13 Teamsters Local 160 Contract. I'll move to approve the request.
Moved by Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Al, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the Teamsters Local 160 Contract, which follows the same, the same as everybody else? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 5.3 is the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Perks and Trails Legacy Grant Program. Big motion?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Debbie, second by Michelle, questions or comments? Lucy.
Yes.
Go us in.
The city has an opportunity to apply for this grant for $390,000, and the city has encumbered funds to match the grant, and this would be due in September, and we would hear about the grant in the winter months, so the project could take place in 2013. And it's much needed, and it's an amenity that is really widely used by the entire community.
Question, Lucy, I just want to make sure I'm understanding how you laid out the numbers for us, and as in the resolution, if it passes, it's saying the city would secure their portions $121,610, correct, in non-state matching funds, but leveraged by the Rotary, thank you very much, for the Rotary of $24,000, now is that included in the $121,000, or that's in addition?
That's in addition.
In addition, okay. Thank you.
Okay, and if that happens, we'll certainly take any other donations.
That's right. We are open tomorrow.
We're open, right. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion which is to approve the legacy grant? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 5.4 is the Community Forest Bonding Grants for 2012 through 14. I'll move to approve that request.
Second.
Moved by Michelle, second by Jerry, questions or comments? I got a question as long as Keith is here. Keith, kind of related to this, on the ash borer, what's going, what's our plan? I do, I think I read something in the paper where there was in Tremplin or somewhere. Is it getting closer, or what, and what have we been doing and what are we planning to do?
As far as the Emerald Ash Borer goes, I think people are generally surprised that it has not been known to spread this year, and a great deal. I think people anticipated to be further out, but it has been found, like you said, in Tremplin across the river from where it was found previous year. So, you know, it's still out there and it's still coming. But what the city's been doing is we've been out treating ash trees on the boulevards and in the parks. We treated, I don't know the exact number, but quite a few this last year, and we'll continue that over the next few years. Part of this grant, this grant that we have here tonight is for planting a diversity of native trees to the area, and part of our in-kind match is the treating of trees, the removal of trees, and the planting of new trees. And then DNR will pay for up to $25,000 worth of planting trees. We also have removed a number of ash trees that were in poor quality and taken them down. We've not aggressively taken down a lot of trees yet, but we've taken down some in parks that were in, were in poor condition. And we've had a number of property owners that requested boulevard tree, ash trees to come down that we also thought were good candidates for coming down. That's where at with the ash borer.
When they come down, do we put something else in?
That's what this is going to be doing. We've been holding off on that for a couple of reasons, because it's best to plant in the fall, and we can't start until this process gets signed. But yes, we will be planting in this, there's a selection of about a dozen trees that people can choose from, and they choose from these, so make arrangements with one of the local nurseries to provide these trees. That's, we've already been doing that. So yes, we'll be planting trees as fast as we can.
Okay, anyone got some question?
Thank you. Keith, a couple of things. Do you know about how many trees this grant money will buy for us, the $25,000? I know we've got, you know, staff and equipment and all that, can we get a estimate?
Ah, yes.
Or was it in there and I didn't see?
Yes, it is.
I was looking for it, I didn't see it.
No, I don't, I don't see that number.
Yeah, I didn't think it was in there, right?
It was in the form we sent to them, but it's, so it's in there someplace, but I'm not sure how many it is.
Okay.
They're a couple hundred dollars each.
Each for tree?
Yep.
Okay.
And then we'll be, we'll actually be contracting for labor to plant them as well.
So that comes out of that money. Okay, with that. My other question, and I know recently I contacted you a couple of weeks ago, it appeared, which reminded me, appeared that somebody close to where I live just took down a tree in the boulevard, in the right-of-way, right? So my question is, what is the city's ordinance on citizens removing trees in the city, in the right-of-way, in the boulevard? And again, how then, if so, how do we inform the public of that? Because I'm assuming a lot of people don't know. And then follow through if the tree is removed, is there some kind of fine? What are we doing to help the public understand that? Because here we are, all these trees and planting and effort, and we're talking about the city shade, and I know I brought that up again last session, you know, last council session, that great piece that we're trying to do to get a canopy of trees. So where are we at with that?
Everybody, you know, loves their boulevard trees, and they tend to take ownership of them, but actually they belong to the city. Any tree on the boulevard belongs to the city, and as such should be maintained, trimmed, removed, and planted by the city. Obviously, if somebody wants to plant a tree on the boulevard, we allow that, as long as it's within a certain species, certain variety of trees, we allow that to happen. But they're not to be removing them without the city permission. We could pursue that legally if they, if they take them down. I'm not sure what the fine is for that, but we could pursue that. I have not seen that happen in the past, but I haven't seen a lot of them come down without talking to us first. I'm sure there are cases like you mentioned.
Do you think that we should be doing a better job or a better way of letting the public know that? Because I'm sure a lot of people don't know, especially now that we're really, you know, looking at Emerald Ash Borer, we're doing trees, we're doing, just, you know, another point of information for folks so that they know we're on the website or something, maybe in the tree area, as a friendly reminder of what to do.
We certainly could, at your recommendation. In general, people come to us and seem to be quite aware they'd like to have us do it for them. It seems more often that's the case for...
Because I know I've got two boulevard trees I don't like, so you can take them anytime.
We don't, we don't do it just at people's request.
Yeah.
Unless it's a poor quality tree.
Right, okay. And then if, there could be some fine if things got that bad or something.
Yes, there could be.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the Community Forest Bonding Grant? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 5.5 is the Airport Engineering Consultant Service Contract. Move to approve the consultant service contract.
Moved by Debbie, second by Al, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the Airport Consulting Service Contract? All that, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
I'll start with George.
At the start of the meeting, you heard City Manager Judy Bodway mention that construction has begun down on Wall Street, and that'll be the second half of the project, and it's, I say, what was done already is very, very nice, and I know this will follow suit with it, be very, very good. For completion of projects, Highway 43, the turn lanes, the bypass lanes, opened up last week Friday. Very, very convenient, very safe, very good. The crews are out there landscaping today, so that project is getting completed up, and it's going to be very, very good. And that project was a long time waiting, and I guess if you wait, good things do happen, so. Also, I'd like to wish a speedy recovery to Donald Byrd. He is at home recovering from surgery, and we wish him well. And speaking of marriage today, a longtime East End couple, today is their wedding anniversary. Ray and Lorraine Greenwood are celebrating 65 years today. So wish them many, many more. And as Ray would tell you, as any man would tell you, what is the success to that marriage? Just do what your wife tells you. And, and I have not learned that yet, but anyway, do what your wife tells you.
That's not what Carol says.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, George. Debbie?
Thank you, Your Honor. Judy, I'd like, if you could please give the blasting, get the, an update to the blasting committee, and we haven't met since, I think it was April, around there, if I remember right, so we could just kind of get an update via email or something, would be appreciated. This might be Keith's question. The Nuverison Building, that's almost completed there on Front Neck behind Mugby Junction, there's that little section of road they had to dig up that abuts their property, and it's still very rough and bumpy, and what's the timeframe for that getting back nice and smooth, and they repair it and fix it?
I don't have a timeframe, but we will make sure it gets back.
They do that? Okay.
I don't have the exact timeframe.
Okay, but they are responsible for getting it all back to there? Okay, thank you, that's all.
Okay, Michelle?
I was going to sing, because I found out it was Al's birthday on Friday, but I'm just going to bypass that and just say, happy birthday, Al.
Thank you, thank you.
Ditto.
Okay. Jerry? Al?
Thank you.
You got to sing, huh?
That would be great.
Al?
How old are you?
Mine is Wednesday, so we can sing together.
Speaking of music, I'd just like to pass along a very big thank you to Myron Hug and the Winona Municipal Band for another great summer of concerts and entertainment at the Lake Park Band Shell. It's probably the oldest continuously performing musical group of municipal banders of some sort west of the Mississippi, so. It's a great honor, they had a great season. Welcome back to Winona, all students and faculty and staff at our institutions like Winona State, St. Mary's, Southeast Tech. Congratulations to our neighbors Goodview and the Goodview Activity Group for a wonderful Goodview Day celebrations past weekend. Saw Jerry, our mayor, in the parade, carrying a sign.
My kid put me to work.
And also, on a serious note, I'm sorry that the advocates on pro and con of the issue that we didn't talk about left, because I really did want to pass along something, in my opinion, and I've saved it for council concerns. There are many forces driving this Minnesota constitutional amendment appearing on our ballots this November. And I want to thank the Winona Human Rights Commission for their very thoughtful discussion on that issue, and their advice to the council to adopt a resolution urging voters to reject the amendment. The Human Rights Commission is an important part of the structure of our local government, and I certainly respect their work on behalf of all community members. However, after talking with first ward residents, reading emails both for and against council action, and reflecting on what action the Winona City Council should take, I've concluded that this specific recommendation is something this council should not take action, either in support or in opposition of the issue. Now, the council should certainly advocate at the state level for support on issues that directly impact our citizens, such as local government aid, Highway 43 bridge design and timetable, the Highway 61 corridor changes, and so forth. And historically, I don't recall this council taking positions on divisive state or national issues. I support the present council's choice to remain focused on local issues, keeping Winona a fiscally healthy community, providing cost-effective services such as fire, police, recreation, streets, water, and wastewater treatment to all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Under the consent, or, yeah, the consent agenda, there is one item, the approval of the minutes from August 6th and August 16th.
Move to approve those minutes? Okay, moved by Al, second by George, all in favor of the consent, which is the two minutes, all in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry on.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adjourn.
Moved by Jerry.
Second.
Second by Michelle, all in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry on. Thank you.